Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the special meeting with the Nass County Attorney Commissioners to work at this time. And it's cut merit for our board to start all our meeting with a prayer by our Commissioner. You're welcome to stand and join us in that prayer. You're welcome to use this time to have your own prayer, or you're welcome to use this as a moment's stop, whichever you prefer. An after prayer, we always have a pledge to lead us through the flag. I would ask Commissioner Outlaw to lead us in that. And at this time, I'd ask Commissioner Wells, if she will lead us in the invitation. Thank you.
How proud we come together today. We come together, Father Lord, as a diverse group. But God, in this diverse group, we all have one thing in common. We all want what's best for Nass County. We want what's best for our citizens. Just as you've been with us through this meeting, and sometimes, Lord, we know that things don't look the way that we want to, but, God, in your time, we know that they will work out. Just be with each one of us today. Be with each one of us here. Thank them so much for coming, Lord, and have my interest in what's going on. Just God bless each home with their presence, and keep us close to you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Would you join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, in the digital, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Commissioner Wells, Commissioner Outlaw. Purpose of this special meeting, and I'm told by my clerk, or our clerk, that I can only discuss items that were in the public, in the public's agenda for the special meeting, and that will be a report from the Commissioners as it relates to the situation of our Nass County Detention Center. And at this time, I would like to give you that before we get to our next. My mother-in-law, who's a pretty spiritual lady, sent me a note over the weekend, and you had worked quite a bit, parent myself this morning. It's very short, and it's something that this board practices at all times. And it simply says, "Before you speak, let your words pass through three gates." The three gates are: is it true? Is it necessary? And is it counted? Again, our board always operates in this manner. I think, I'm very pleased to say, I think we do a great job of passing through the three gates. And I would encourage everyone to put what you're getting ready to say before this text, before the paper. The purpose of today's call meeting, as I said, is to put the board's position out in the public. We have been pretty low-key about the detention center up to this point, and it was my choice to do that. I like to operate in a back room, kind of in the vacuum. I don't like to be out front. I don't feel comfortable doing it. But my board directed me last week that we had to, I guess you would say, go into office on this matter. And we're here this morning to do exactly that. Commissioners met last Thursday afternoon in a emergency call meeting to discuss the county attorney, to discuss with the county attorney, to the letter dated December 18th on Steve Lewis with the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. Today's special call meeting has one item stated on the agenda, as I said, to state this board's stance on the Nass County Detention Center. First thing that needs to be understood is, this vote is 100% together on where we stand in what I will be discussing here today. And I will repeat, we are 100% together. We're together with our administration. We're together with our manager, our assistant manager, our facility director, and our county engineer. I do want to make it very public that our maintenance staff has done a fantastic job this last year under very difficult circumstances, and our board thanks them tremendously. And this time, I'd like our board to give a show of hands for this maintenance staff. History of the Nass County Detention Center. Existing facility consists of buildings constructed in 1978, 1991, and 1997, and when properly maintained, has the capacity to house 295 inmates, 259 males, and 36 females. As with any facility, ongoing maintenance and repairs are needed, and will always be needed. Given the age and the use of these buildings, they are in good shape. Inspections. All jails in North Carolina, and there are 100-plus, receive two annually unannounced inspections. I've been a Commissioner myself for 18 years. That means I've been here through 36 inspections. And up until 2019, we had never, and I repeat, never, had a bad inspection. I had checked with the two living former sheriffs that we have, and they state they had very little issues with the Nass County Detention Center during their term in office. No sitting Commissioner has ever heard about any jail issues until late 2018. Some of these Commissioners have been here 25 years plus. All total, we've got 102 years' experience as Commissioners in Nass County. The main 2019 inspection was the first sign of trouble. In that particular inspection, which is coming out, we had many items on there. I will say, I, as a contractor, took that inspection and went through it third because I get a copy of it directly from the state. And in that inspection, we had 8% that were facility-related, and we had 92% that were operations-related. In 2019, in December, we had our second inspection, which was just a couple weeks ago. That was also unannounced. In that inspection, we had 32% facility problems, and we had 68% operational problems. Let me explain the difference between facilities and operations. Facilities are under the charge of the administration, the maintenance staff of Nass County, as well as the Board of Commissioners. The operational part, Board of Commissioners do not have anything, and I repeat, anything to do, and it falls under the Office of the Sheriff. Of course, we've always got to work together in anything we do. The issues that we see this morning with our detention center is a changing in the inmates that we house here. When I say changing, certainly the drugs, the gangs, we've heard our sheriff say many times, has caused us issues that we didn't have in the past. We might have had some, but nothing to the degree that we have today. I hope, I serve on this board at the time, as well as the rest of my colleagues, that this particular issue improves tremendously. Because we have a larger degree of more troublesome inmates, we have a classification problem with our inmates. Classification means you've got to keep them separated, and this board understands that's the biggest problem we have with our facility. Facilities are an issue, but I promise you this morning, because I've got the backing of this board, that we will take care of our facility issues. We will take care of them in a timely manner, like we've always done, and we will continue to do what we can to work with the Office of the Sheriff to help them in any way with the operational problems of our facility. Another problem we have is staff shortage. We haven't had a full staff all year. Of course, that comes under operations, but again, this board is here to help in any way we can. I think the real problem we have, and I'll use a phrase my vice chair Wayne Outlaw uses many times, is attention to detail. I know his career, as well as Ms. Richardson, was in a industry, that pharmaceutical industry. If you didn't pay attention to details, you wouldn't stay open long. I think Mr. Outlaw said that fairly recently. And here we are today, wondering if we're going to stay open long-term. So, we've got to get back to attention to details. To do that, although item, Commissioner Outlaw has said many times, is that we've got to have a checklist on everything we do that makes this accountable. I hope that we are establishing those checklists. I know we have done it in facilities. I hope we're doing it in operations as well. Again, that is not under the control of the Commissioners. We can only ask, and we can only beg, and I'm willing to do both. I hear frequently that we are underfunding the Sheriff's Department. I'm here today to tell you that is just not accurate. The Sheriff's Office for the last five years has had the largest percent of entries of any department or office in the county of Nass. I will say the largest increase each budget year. A real issue, of course, with this board is the letter that we received on December 18th. I think all of the media have seen that letter, got a copy of it. If you don't, we'll be glad to provide you with one today. You can see our perk when this meeting is over. The thing that bothered me most when we had a discussion with the state about this is, we found out this is the first time any of the 100 counties in the state of North Carolina have gotten a letter like this. That's very disturbing to me. It's very disturbing to our board. What that letter says, basically, we've got to find somewhere to put, we've got 50 inmates outside of our jail now, we've got to find somewhere to put another 100-plus. And that has got to be a real strain on the operation of the Sheriff's Department. We can keep 56 if we do what the letter said we could do. And of course, we can return them all if we do what the directive is. And that basically means put all your attention to the details. I want you to understand that we would very much like to help the Sheriff more than we can. But the Sheriff's Office, or the Office of the Sheriff, is pretty much like our school board. There's only so much a board can do. We have a statute that dictates how we must operate with our Office of the Sheriff. We have to follow this because it is statute. It is very clear what we can assist with, what we can demand, and believe me, that's not much, we can only ask for. And we will continue helping, and we will continue asking for some of the things that I will be outlining here this morning. In our opinion, we have a real culture problem in the detention center at this time by our employees. It may be the worst that I've experienced in my 50 years of business. I don't know why. I'm not here today to put blame on it. But I know that we have some severe culture problems. And when I say culture problems, I mean, we have employees that are not bought into what they're paid to do. We have employees that are not comfortable with the job today. It hasn't always been that way, and I'm not sure why it's that way today. It would take a lot of work for us to turn this around. It would take buy-in from everybody in the administration, this board, as well as the Office of the Sheriff. But we are here this morning willing and able, and certainly would like to help in that process. The thing that bothered me a lot is, in Nass County, we don't have this problem in any other office or department. We have an excellent workforce led by the state's greatest selection of department heads and administrative staff. And I mean that. I don't think you'll find another county in the state that has a better administrative staff or overall department heads than what we have here. And believe me, we have a great Sheriff in Nass County. Personal friend of mine. Been challenging at times of late, but still a personal friend of mine, and I will be helping in any way I can, and this board wishes to do the same. So I hope we can lock hands moving forward and do what it takes to get us off the radar of the state of North Carolina with issues of our jail. I know traveling, and I'm not here to get off track, but many times, I get approached throughout the state about the issues we have, and I'll sit here, rock them out, and I hope that will eventually get better. But as of late, I've had a few comments, and not many, about the condition of our detention center as I traveled throughout the state. Those problems need to be looked after at home. They don't need to be followed on the state of North Carolina. The cost of moving these inmates is what bothered this board the most. We worked hard every day, and our administrative staff, from top to bottom, worked hard every day to look out for the money that we get from our citizens, our taxpayers in North Carolina. That's our number one goal, is to maintain the tax rate that we have. We have been successful 10 years. This will be our 11th year, and we intend to be successful for the next 10 more years. Be somebody else doing it, other than some of us on board, including myself, but in maintaining the tax rate that we have now, and we can do it by simply budgeting like we should, and attention to detail. Outlaw, I hope you did pack that statement. I would intend to use it quite often. But just to go over the cost of moving these extra inmates, it amounts to $11,000 at that. That doesn't sound like a lot of money, but when you say weeks $77,000, when you say a month $340,000, and when you say a year $4.1 million, it becomes a burden on this county very quickly. It will have a direct effect on the Office of the Sheriff's budget moving forward, because that's where the money should come from. It will have an effect on the Office of the Sheriff's budget for next year. And it will, if it goes on very long, have an effect on the overall budget and the tax rate for Nass County. And that includes money that we should be putting our children in our schools, and it should also includes money that we should be able to give our employees in future raises for the job they do for Nass County. That's why it concerns this board tremendously, is it will affect how we can move forward and what we want to do for our citizens by maintaining the tax rate, what we can do for our schools, and what we can do for our employees. Very important points to each one of us. I'd like to go over the Commissioners' work to date on this matter. In January of 2019, because I realized that the relationship between our Office of the Sheriff and our administration was being tested quite a bit, and things in my time have just run so smooth those years, I took it pretty hard. I made some mistakes myself as chairman. The first thing I did was establish a committee of Lou Richardson, thank you, Ms. Richardson, for serving her, Wayne Outlaw as our vice chair, and myself in January. And the purpose of that committee was to take the request we would get, or anything that came out of the Office of the Sheriff, to the manager, and sit down and discuss it with the manager prior to us making any decision or responding to it. I felt like the relationship between the manager and the Sheriff at that time was deteriorating somewhat, even though they are both very good, responsible people. So I used it as a tactic to try to smooth things over some. We did that for about two months. Sheriff would give a request to the manager. The manager would bring it to the committee. We'd sit and talk about it. We would run our decision, and then the manager would report like any sheriff. It had a little bit of success, but quite frankly, it didn't work the best in the world. Our board had a little concern about it, because maybe they weren't getting, the other four members weren't getting a full take on what was going on. I'm not sure why it didn't work. I thought it was a good idea, but history has shown me it wasn't the best idea in the world. We kind of stopped that probably in the March range. And in April, I asked the Sheriff, which he greatly was glad to do, to come and meet with his twenty commissioners. We did that over a two- or three-hour period one day, in groups that we were allowed by statute to meet, which means there were two or three hours in the room at any given time. And those meetings, the board, I think, and where we stood, the disconnect between what the Sheriff thought we needed in the detention center and what the board felt like we could afford in the detention center, helped a little bit, maybe helped them understand. After that, we kind of dropped the committee concept moving forward, and in about the May range, what we started doing was, the facility director, Mr. Lamb and myself, would meet with the Sheriff about every 10 to 14 days. And we would sit there in the conference room for hour and a half, two hours, and we would just basically have a roundtable discussion with the Sheriff and whoever he brought with him on the staff of the detention center, and try to get the things that were needed on track. And we had quite a bit of success with that. I don't know how many times we've met, total, about every two weeks, and we did that from sometime in April up to about the end of October. Many things were accomplished during that period of time. Many positive things happened. We let a contractor fix the exercise yard, which had been used so much. We fixed a lot of doors. We took a bid process on the additional cameras that needed ordering and put in facilities in the facility itself. We have now placed a order for that. And believe me, it just takes a long time for guns to drive me to coming out of practice and product practice. Don't construction work, it's just mind-boggling what it takes, but once we got the price that we could afford, or actually, the best system anyway, then we had to have it designed, and then we had to give it to the state. But it was with the state for probably a job than two months, I guess, it seemed like. And we did finally get approved last Friday, when they were down here last Thursday, to proceed with that camera contract. And I'm sure we have done that by now. We have replaced, and we'll be replacing, a lot of lights in the door. We have completely renovated doors one, two, and three. We are now working on doors four and five, and we will continue working on upgrading locks throughout the facility. And I hope the Office of the Sheriff thinks that those meetings were productive. We haven't met right lately because it kind of has turned into almost a crisis center. But this board, as well as myself, are willing to do what it takes to keep it moving. As it relates to shortage of staff, we suggested, from the board, that we should look into starting a detention officer class in our community college. We had a similar problem three or four years ago with our 911 operates. We were short. We were losing them to other areas. And we started a class, and believe me, it helped tremendously. What I did see was, we were using it, but the counties around us were using it also. That's what community colleges are about. I'm not sure if much movement's been done to that suggestion. It appears to me, maybe not too much, but I sincerely believe if we would just work with our community college, we could find the people that could work in that facility and have proper training for it. I understand that our manager's office, as well as the human HR department, offered to do a job fair. You hear about job fairs all the time. You always have a tremendous amount of things to deal with, but to date, that hasn't happened. That suggestion has not taken its foothold as well. I certainly, again, encourage the Office of the Sheriff to look into those two things. Our board of Commissioners also offered to hire, at our expense, not the Office of the Sheriff's expense, correctional officers to work in our jail from someone like Correction Corporation of America, until we got our staff figured. That offer was rejected, and I really don't understand that, because that was an offer that we were willing to make, and if it indeed is shortage of staff, we've got to solve that problem. What we have also done recently is, and this is just the beginning, we have acted on two budget amendments in the last month. We moved $135,000 out of various line items in the Office of the Sheriff to cover these adult detention costs in other facilities. Just last week, we moved $232,000 from last lot of salaries in the Sheriff's office, which is a total of $367,000. That would get us up to maybe mid-January, first of February, the rate will be going. The budget amendments will be coming every month, I'm afraid, because we've got to cover that cost. This morning, I also want to direct our manager and our finance officer to look at everything that is spent, and only process essential items, not to approve any non-essential items in our Office of the Sheriff moving forward. I'd like to ask the manager, if he has the authority, and I'm not sure whether he does or not, that he and the finance director sign off on all purchases in the Sheriff's office, because we've got to find the money to pay this with, without it coming from the taxpayers of Nass County. I'm also very pleased to say that the Commissioners have retained the services of Mosley and Associates from Richmond, Virginia, to do a full assessment and make recommendations of what improvements or additions that are needed in our detention center. Mosley Group does about 85% of all the duty in North Carolina. It's also the same firm that we use to do our courthouse addition, which turned out very successful. I'd ask you to take a look at it for those that are y'all coming from out of town if you leave today. I know we've got the right consultant hires. We will be looking at what we need to do to improve existing facility, as well as an addition that we may need. And the sole purpose of what we build, even though we're going to wait on their report, is that we need to have ability, as the Sheriff has told me many times, to lock down these inmates that are causing the issues in our jail. We will get that done as fast as North Carolina statute will allow us to do it. Once we get the report back, we'll prepare to fund what the report indicates and move forward with it. But it does not happen overnight. It will be at least a two-year process, I'm sad to say. Commissioners, last year at the last moment, and I think this may be the first time Commissioners have alienated our manager a little bit, have to have $500,000, half a million dollars put into budget this year at the last moment, out of the balance of the budget, for any jail improvement needs that would come up moving forward. We also had approved about $120,000 for plumbing repairs to the jail already, and to date, out of that fund, we have spent $347,848. So I would tell you, we have been working diligently on the facility side of the detention In closing, this morning, I want to give a statement from my board. The notes that I have taken from each board member, and I hope I've covered them all because I asked Outlaw to comment on them, where it was where, is, number one, we will not be constructing a new jail in Nass County. We do not have any desire on this board of Commissioners to house federal inmates in our Nass County jail, or any other inmate that are not statutorily required for us to house. We stand ready to implement and fund what the Mosley study defines after a full review by all parties on renovations or addition. And I say, full review, that includes this board, it includes our facility staff, and it includes- it includes the Office of the Sheriff, and anyone that the Office of the Sheriff wishes to have involved in this process. I hope we've retaken census on what we'll be doing very quickly, so we can get it started. But again, we stand ready to implement and fund what this study comes up with. In the future, we will have an item, as Madam Clerk, if you would note this, at the beginning of our monthly meetings, hopefully before public hearings, but I'm not sure what the statute says about that, to get an update for the public, for our facility director on the facility side of the operations center. That will be each monthly meeting, at seven, nine o'clock in the mornings. In the course of general statute, when fifty-three eight at one oh four reports, we request the elected sheriff at this time to also be present to give an update on the operational side of the detention center. We will request this presentation be given by the elected sheriff each first Monday in the month that we meet. We also will, I will be personally getting in touch with the state of North Carolina, and I will ask them, unless, again, something in the statute stops me from doing that, to begin doing a monthly inspection of our jail like they did back in December. We're going to offer, and we will pay for this, additional inspection moving forward, out of the county funds if we need to. I will contact Mr. Lewis about that sometime today. Again, we would want to do this at least through 2020. I will state again that we have a hefty county manager to freeze all non-essential budget items in the Office of the Sheriff's budget under the categories of detention center and sheriff. The court security will remain as due as acceptable as it relates to that. I will tell you, this problem is very fixable. It's not a difficult thing to fix. I want to share with you some notes I brought with me from 2017, only two years ago. When we had our inspection, our first inspection in 2017, I got the letter like I always do. Just highlighting a couple of things that the inspector said. It said, "The deficiencies noted in inspections are of the kind that are normal to the operation of the facility. Every day, our supervisors notify the administrators of any repairs that are issued." And this came from the jail administrator, that captain, C.W. Moore at that time. "These issues are given to the detention maintenance officer and county maintenance personnel. These repairs that arise are corrected immediately. Repairs that require outside services by an outside contractor are scheduled immediately." That's where we were in 2017. Also, I want to read a couple of comments, emails that I found on the computer. It came from the same Mr. Moore, who was the administrator at that time. Just one statement, he said, "The jail inspector came yesterday and was most pleased in what he saw." He stated that the Nash County Sheriff's Office now has one of the best-kept jails in the area. We only got gived for, I'm not sure what the word "gived" means, but we only got gived for the following four items. And they were very minor in nature. They were two facilities, and they were two operations. And they were all fixed within seven days, and the report was filed back to the state. So that's where we've got to get back to all of us, to where we were in 2017, when we had our jail inspection deal. I do recall, Sheriff, that you many times mentioned how much we had improved the jail, and we were all proud at that time. I know I was particularly. And I won't say why, the sheriff understands why I was very proud. We don't want to have the worst jail in eastern North Carolina. We want to have the best jail in eastern North Carolina. And we can indeed have that if we will work together. I really think that we've got the people employed in Nash County. And I know the sheriff is not going to listen to me, just thinking I'm getting ready to make, and I will promise you, there's not another sheriff in the ninety-nine other counties that would listen to me. But I just feel so sincere about this, that. I think the culture would be fixed in two easy moves. If we would take our chief deputy and put him overcharge to the directional center here in Nash County, and if we would return the former captain that we had, Curtis Moore, back to the jail administrator, I think the culture would improve tremendously. I think it would do it quickly. But again, we don't have a part in that, and I apologize for saying it this morning, but it's something that's on my heart and something that I firmly believe in. Last, the board requests the elected sheriff of Nash County to stop the vast amount of news releases and press conferences concerning our detention center. This is a Nash County issue. It's not a state of North Carolina issue. Our board does not operate in this manner, nor does any other department or office in the state, in the Nash County. And I will simply say, if we can do that, I don't think we'd have a problem that we have here today, if we had practiced that all along. And in closing, I'll just simply say, it is amazing what can be accomplished when no one is concerned over who gets the credit. Think about that. It is amazing what can be accomplished when no one is concerned over who gets the credit. At this time, I'm going to close out, and I'm going to ask our other board members if anything they want to add this morning to what I've had to say, and I'd be pleased to hear from any of them at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
After that, sit here and listen, making the report, two things pop out that needs to be done. And that's, the county commissioners are responsible for correcting the facilities and what needs to be done, and we pledge to do that, in fact, we will do it. And the other is the administration of the jail, and that's the sheriff's responsibility. But I certainly would urge the sheriff to make sure that the staff that's managing the jail be well-trained on managing and operating the jail. And we will have one of the best jails, everyone, if we follow that trend and work together.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any other comments from board members?
I'd like to just briefly speak if I could. I just, I think it's very important for everyone to understand that what our chairman did this morning was that in full direction of this board. He indicated that we are one hundred percent together, and he would be one hundred percent correct in that statement. We've been dealing with this issue for some time, and it is our desire to bring it to some closure that would be acceptable to everyone. He indicated the facility issue. He spoke a little bit about attention to detail, and that is from my background in pharmaceutical manufacturing, and it was my great pleasure and privilege to work with Abbott Laboratories from 1971 until the end of 2002. Ms. Richardson may very well remember, when I started at Abbott, they were coming up from a shutdown situation, not very much unlike what we're looking at here today. In my thirty-one-plus years at Abbott, I had the great pleasure and privilege of working with thousands of fine people. And we were in a facility of 1.4 million square feet. We hired and controlled over 2,500 employees. We daily, a little simple thing like a checklist, a checklist, kept our operation under close control. And that's a simple, simple document, and it's probably computerized now because I've been gone quite a while, but it's just simply a matter of assigning someone to walk around, identify specific things you want to look at, look at those things, and determine, are they acceptable, or do they need some type of corrective action? And then follow up to make sure that that's completed in a timely manner. Now, Ms. Richardson would tell you like I would tell you, if we were not attentive to the details in that operation, and particularly with those checklist items, then we would not have operated during my time there without interruption. It would have certainly created significant issues for us. But again, chairman is speaking in our direction, he's communicating what we ask him to communicate. We want to be fully transparent going forward, and that's why we ask for the monthly communication. I hope we can do that. We're going to do what is necessary to correct the facility items, and it is my hope and my desire, and I don't know what we can do, but we'll do whatever we can do to assist with operational issues. Now, I want to highlight one thing that the chairman mentioned. The chairman said that we are willing to put what I would call contract detention officers in the jail until the hiring situation can be rectified. See, if I, I'm not the sheriff, I can't make that decision, but if I'm sitting in the jail, and I've got a shortage of people, and I can't seem to hire those people for whatever reason, I'm going to reach out and take whatever help I can get until I can correct that personnel situation. So that's just my opinion on that. But again, we have got a great sheriff, there's no question about that, and we appreciate everything that he does. But quite frankly, I'm hopeful that going forward, we can work together in an open setting, in a transparent setting, and address the issues that we've got. And if we do that, then in just a very short period of time, we have control. Chairman, I support what you have said. I appreciate the fact that you've stood up there and you've said it, because it's not an easy spot that you're in this morning. But I want you to know, at least from where I sit, and I believe I speak for this board, that you have our one hundred percent support going forward with what you communicated this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Alon. Any other comment? Ms. Wilson.
Excuse me. Ms. McHale said, "This is not something that we're trying to buy off of our sheriff. We have a good job, and we will report our sheriff. It's just that we've got to work together, and sometimes we go all out of town, all the way men will come together, we've got a problem. If you see, you need to come over there, or if it's government, now let's put it out, instead of letting it fest. But I want you to know that you do have my support."
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
I'd like to echo that as well. We, you know, we are all up here, we want to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, and we want to make sure that our public is looked after and is safe, and that the sheriff's office staff working in our detention facility is safe. Those are certainly priorities, and that is why we already have the wheels turning on the improvements project. And we really do want to work together to get this done, and so whatever we can do, just please communicate that to us.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate to you that we are working, we've been working, we do what we can, but what I think this board is really interested in, what we get back from both the architects and their suggestions, and whatever we have to do, I think we can all agree, and we guarantee Nash County that we're going to have a safe and up-to-date jail with individual sales, or whatever we need, we're going to work together to do that. So, and my biggest problem sits, I've been on this board, and it just takes too long to get things done, so we are moving, and we think we will move as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Ms. Stone.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I am the last one on the board, I guess, speaking, and most of you know by now, I guess, is I am not seeking reelection next year. I have been on the counter over twenty years, and I know that we've been, I could even look, and I probably crazy sometimes, but that's what it's all about. It's not about us, it's about what we can do to help somebody else, and to make our country grow strong. But the only way we can do that, we have to talk to people, not at people. So when we talk to people and sit down and understand, you know, understand, tell them, repeat it again, and work together, that's what it's all about. And it would be so complicated, so, just work together. I don't agree with him, just show me how you think it will work, and keep talking about it, he will work. I know that, he's doing it too long. But anyway, I just hope and pray it's, just going to benefit everybody, because I want them safe. I want my children, my family to be safe, and that's what it's all about. And I want those people in detention centers that are working, I want them to work. But we have to communicate, that's the whole main problem. And I do know it can work, it will work, but we just have to work together. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. At this time, if any member of the media has a question, or they like to ask, I'll be glad to try to take questions at this time and answer them for you, or I will promise you that I will get back with you if there are any questions. Anyone have one? That is one for you, or I talk too much, or what I said didn't make a lot of sense, I'm not sure we've. Sheriff Stone, would you like to have any comments? You're welcome to, sir, but I'm not calling on you to, and if you wish to, I'd be glad to hear from you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you for being here.
For any of the media that does come up to the jail with the situation, sir, we'll more than actively do that. Several things, I thought, I agree with the comment Wayne Outlaw made about attention to detail. How many years have you been in this business?
Thirty-one plus.
And it worked fine. That's where a lot of these issues have come from. I think after this report will be the best time to talk about this. I don't know how we're doing it before report. I don't know, when is the report supposed to be due?
I understand it will be in February, Sheriff.
February, what, yeah?
I don't think we have a decision.
Okay, well, that's probably the better time.
We are pushing hard to get.
I understand. I think that's the better time to look and give a professional opinion of what's going on. I don't know how you can sit there and say, "We need a new jail," or "We don't need a new jail," or "We need this, or we need that." Let the report come out, I think we can make a very professional decision, but I appreciate y'all.
Thank you, Sheriff. If there are no other comments, I entertain a motion to shoot them both before you.
Well, this is, I haven't been able to, but I just want to make a comment about Commissioner Richardson, she's been a good servant on this board, and after this year, she will not be working, and I'm sure we're going to miss her. Very seldom she made comments, but when she does make them, they really count, which tells me that she did a lot of things. And when she does make comments, we listen to it. And Ms. Richardson, we're going to miss you after next year. In fact, I'm seeking reelection, but I wish you the best.
Thank you. We work together.
Well, after the term, I hope you're going to be back, or you need to be for next year.
I'll check on you, I just want to remind you, pull the chain, okay?
Glad to be here, ma'am.
You better be here, ma'am, I think you will be. And any other comments about anything, a motion to adjourn this time? Have a motion, I'm very concerned, you know, suck at him, I, Ms. Wilson, give you questions on that motion. Before I call for the vote, I wish everyone a happy holiday, and get a family. I appreciate those that work with the county, have a work through the holidays, and everything that you do. All in favor of the formal motion, let me know when I say you're high.
High.
Can you hold a light for them? Stand your